Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. I do apologize. So let's get this meeting started. Okay, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Plaid Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, and location as set known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster in January 27, 2023 via email. Copy of this notice has been placed at the Administration Building Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 27, 2023. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in the diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grillo. Ms. Lysinski. Dr. Penna.
Here.
Mr. Remy. Ms. Rix. Mr. Rogers. Mr. Saunders. President Cook. We have a quorum.
Please rise to the platform.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December Board Meeting. This evening, we have several presentations that we are going to recognize. This evening, we are going to recognize our Guardian State Teacher of the Year for each building along with the Support Staff Member of the Year that we normally do. There will be another presentation at the end of the year where the county will also recognize them. But being that these individuals were selected by their colleagues, we would like to recognize them at this month's meeting as our staff members of the month along with our student of the month. We will then have a separate presentation, followed by a presentation from Dr. Howard Morris. So without further ado, I would like to bring up the high school, which will be represented by Mr. Mike Zajak and Ms. Snyder Haynes. Ms. Haynes Snyder is going to do the student?
Hello. I'm here to present a special award to our student of the month. This student has so much school spirit. I have worked with the student since they have been in sixth grade. They have shown so much maturity. They have so much enthusiasm for Asbury Park. And they are also just such a tremendous help to everyone and such an inspiration to myself and just the first person that always volunteers for any activity that we have. It is my honor to give this award to Keon Franks. The Asbury Park High School Athlete of the Month is Icon Crawford.
Icon isn't here, but will you accept on his behalf?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start off with our Teacher of the Year for the high school. This individual has been a gym teacher within, well, in the Phys Ed department for, I don't know, 13 years or so. Is that close? Nineteen. It's really not nineteen. Listen, he went from the guy who got suspended for quite a while to the Teacher of the Year. Mr. Matt Arizon. Great guy. Come on in, Mr. Arizon. Congratulations. Well-deserving. The kids love him. The staff love him. He goes above and beyond every day that he's here. Congratulations. Good job, Mr. Arizon. Here you go, Mr. Arizon.
You guys stay up here. Stay right there.
And for our Support Staff of the Year, this is a woman that has dedicated her whole career to the Asbury Park School District. She's been in almost all the schools within the district. We love to have her in the high school. She's an asset. She is the best. I don't even know how to say it. The students love her. The teachers love her. She supports everybody, whether you're the secretary or whether you're the student. She knows every kid in the school. Without further ado, Ms. Nancy Estrada.
Is her family here?
Families.
Oh, come on up. Is her children? Hold on, wait a second. Congratulations to both of them. You'll be recognized again at the end of the year. Oh, Mrs. Estrada. You'll be recognized at the end of the year with your colleagues from the rest of the district. Again, to Matthew Arizon and Mrs. Estrada, your colleagues have recognized the hard work that you've done. And this is no short of a tremendous accolade bestowed upon both of you for your dedication to the district and to the students in your respective building and representing the district. So congratulations to both of you. We'll have MLK. Ms. Hope Witter. Walk.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. It is with great pleasure and great honor to introduce the Student of the Month, Jason Brooks. Jason Brooks is not only an eighth grader at MLK, but we also are so proud of him. I've known Jason since he was in first, second, third, first grade? Kindergarten, preschool. Jason is always polite. He's helpful. He is positive. He adds charisma and personality to his classroom setting, to MLK, and to all the teachers who absolutely adore and love him. Jason, I have no words, but this is well deserved. We love you so much at MLK. Dr. Adams. Ms. Ramsey is his teacher. Without further ado, on stage at Broadway, Zakiya Delorbe for Teacher of the Year at MLK. Ms. Delorbe, you and I have known each other for the past 23 years. You are the most amazing, the most beautiful woman I have ever met. You go above and beyond at MLK for your students, for your staff, for your friends, your colleagues, your husband, and your beautiful daughter. This is such a well-deserved honor for Zakiya Delorbe. You deserve this. How do you tell me not to?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And for Support Staff of the Month, not only is she one of my, oh, of the year, sorry. Not only is she the most beautiful instructional coach, I've worked with her for 23 years as well. Ms., thank you. Ms. Jackie Philhauer. Such a well-deserved, such a well-deserved honor. It's an honor to work with both of you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much for filming it. We're going to do a moment of ad lib. Keon, come on up with your family. Stand by the orange tape. Thank you. Congratulations again. You walk back. Ms. Jackson Byers from Bradley Elementary. You're going to do your student flips. Okay, I'm going to hold on to all of this?
Yes, I promise.
At this time, it is my honor and privilege to introduce the Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, none other than Mr. Brian Gazzlin. Listen. This face looks familiar, right? Because his brother got it in June, and they look just alike, right? Come on up, family. Come on up, family. Yes, it is a family affair. Brian is an awesome student. He's a third-grade student. When I tell you last week at our awards assembly, he topped every single category. Good listener, good participation, citizenship, ELA math. Yes, he is an awesome student, and we say thank you, Brian. This is the year. Now, Brian, as you know, when I tell you Brian is always in uniform, every day, we have some, we have some dress-down days. We have a polo for you. We got sweatshirts. Now, Dad, we see you running in here, bringing them to practice and everything. Could you, we have a sweatshirt for you to keep you warm so when you bring it to Asbury on there. And Mom, Mom, we could not do what we do without you. Thank you for blessing us with Brian and Terrance and the whole Brian, the whole Gazzlin family. All right. Congratulations, Brian Gazzlin. At this time, it is an honor and privilege to introduce. All right. Thank you, Brian. Yes. Support. At this time, I would like to introduce our Bradley staff, our Bradley Teacher of the Year, none other than our Charlie Bucket, because we did Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. Come on up, Mr. Barry Seaman. Congratulations. Cheer up, Charlie. Congratulations. Twenty-five years, yes. Thank you very much. And then we have our Dr. Lanny. When I tell you Dr. Lanny has tugged in the Adaptive PE program to a whole other level, if you get a chance, you should see what he has done right here at Bradley Elementary School. We love you, Dr. Chris, and thank you for everything that you do. Adaptive PE, yes.
Dr. Chris rocking it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was quick. Congratulations. Next, and certainly not least, Dr. Schultz for Thurgood Marshall.
Okay, sorry for the delay, everyone. Good evening. The Thurgood Marshall Staff of the Month is, of the Staff of the Year, excuse me, is a teacher who is one of the most dedicated professionals I have ever met. She is an outstanding replication of exactly what a teacher should be for students. Unfortunately, she cannot be here tonight due to a previous personal commitment. But Ms. Kristen Bravo deserves the highest round of applause, and we will accept on her behalf. For the Thurgood Marshall Educational Support Staff of the Year is none other than our fantastic, dedicated school counselor, Mrs. Joanne Major Phillips, who is celebrating her daughter's birthday in Philadelphia this evening and cannot be with us. But she has come to our school and put forth some of the most hard work and hard work for our children that I have seen. So congratulations, Ms. Major Phillips. And now for our Student of the Month, a young lady who is a student in Ms. Snyder's fourth and fifth grade class. She is someone who has come to Thurgood Marshall Elementary School this year and made it her mission and vision to excel every day in academics, in social skills, and in how she treats everyone around her. One of our students that holds a very special place in my heart, so well deserved, Ms. Kamari Ballard Reeve. Please come up and accept your award. And she is joined this evening by her younger sibling and her stepdad. So stepdad, please come up and accept this award as well. Come on in the photo, Dad. And we're joined by Kamari's teacher, Ms. Snyder. And in true Thurgood fashion, this is why we met today, a backpack of all of your favorite things from your teachers at Thurgood Marshall. Congratulations, sweetheart.
Thank you. Can we give a round of applause to all of our recipients this evening, those who could make it and those who could not? Got the tissue paper? Okay. So we're going to do a brief, short intermission to recognize our outgoing Board President, Ms. Karida Cook. So I'd like to call up our Deputy Mayor, Ms. Amy Quinn, who's going to come and give a brief word with some flowers right up here, ma'am. JJ, you guys come up to the orange. Will you come around? Board members as well, come up. And they have some flowers too, I see. So we're going to do.
We just want to thank you for the years that you served on the board, Karida. Karida and JJ's, Karida's son JJ and Jensen started in pre-K. And I'm going to call up their pre-K teacher, Ms. Jamie. And they've remained in Bradley up to third grade. And they started pre-K during the pandemic, which was not an easy task for them. And so thank you to the Asbury Park School District. Thank you for your service, Karida. Do you want to say anything?
Hello?
Thank you, Karida.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
If you guys know me, you know I hate speeches. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you for all your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members. We all thank you and appreciate your work. And they're going to take that with you because we still have a board meeting to reside over. No, that's candy. Hold on one second. Wait, board members want to take a picture?
Tonight, paparazzi?
Yes. Everyone, come on in. JJ, stand by your mom.
Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you. So as you know, we normally do our presentations. This evening, we have one last presentation. So if families, you want to again depart or stay, we'd like to get them out of the way because it is a school evening. We have our Director of Student Services coming up to do a presentation. Dr. Kristi Howard Morris. Watch yourself now. Okay, here we go.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the biannual presentation that is required by the state. It's the self-assessment for determining the grades under the Anti-Bullying Rights Act. While we're waiting for it to get turned on, there's three acronyms I just want to explain. If you see HIB, that's harassment, intimidation, and bullying. You'll also see SST, that's the School Safety Team. All right, so the period that we're covering is from July 1st, 2022 up until June 30th, 2023. Okay, so there are, these are the categories that they use. We have HIB programs, approaches, or other initiatives. You have training, board-approved HIB policy, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIB. HIB-related information and skills, HIB personnel, second-level HIB incident reporting procedures, HIB investigation procedures, and HIB reporting. So these are the categories that our HIB specialist had to do a self-assessment on. So the maximum points in the first category is 15. It goes from zero to three. So we have not at all, exceeding, approaching, and you get zero for if you don't have anything at all. I should hand it. You guys have that in front of you. This packet right here, it explains what the categories are. So if it doesn't meet at all the requirements, you get a zero. If it partially meets, you get a one. Meets all requirements, a two. Or exceeds requirements, you get a three. So in a high school, for the first category, the score was a seven. Maximum's 15. Bradley Elementary received an 11 out of 15. MLK received 14 out of 15. And Thurgood received 13 out of 15. Element two, Asbury Park High School receives an eight out of nine. The maximum was nine. Bradley received a nine. MLK receives a nine. And Thurgood receives a nine. Element three, the maximum points were 15. The high school received 13 points. Bradley received 14. MLK 14. And Thurgood Marshall received 15. Element four, the maximum points were six. Asbury Park High School, Bradley, and Thurgood receives all six points. And MLK received four out of the six. Element five, the maximum points were nine. The high school received six. Bradley Elementary received seven. MLK received eight. And Thurgood Marshall receives all nine. Element six, the maximum points were six points. Asbury Park High School receives four out of the six. And Bradley, MLK, and Thurgood receive all six points. Element seven, maximum points were 12. The high school received seven. Bradley received eight. And MLK and Thurgood received all 12. And the HIB reporting element eight, the maximum amount of points was six points. And the high school received four. Bradley, MLK, and Thurgood received all six points. So the maximum total district points, school points, is 78. So as you can see, the high school received 55. Bradley received 67. MLK received 73. And Thurgood received 76. So the average score was 68 out of the 78. It was just a trend that, I put together a trend for the average district school self-assessments. And just to be clear, the HIB specialists do this themselves. So they look at what occurred during the entire year, and they assess themselves to see whether or not they achieved everything that the state is requiring them to do. So if you look at 2019, 2020, our score was 66%. 2021, we went down to 62%. 21, 22, 61%. And in 22, 23, we went back up to 68%. So again, we're going to do a summary of the HIB reports. We received, the quantitative reports received investigated. There were 92 reports that were investigated. There were two confirmed, and 90 of them were not confirmed. And if you look at the grade levels, there were zero in elementary, 0% in middle school, and 100% with the two in the high school. Now, what I did was I put together some of the reasons why we did not meet or partially met the requirements. And so in Bradley, Thurgood, and Asbury, element one were the HIB programs, approaches, or other initiatives. All of the required groups did not participate. So one of the elements stated that you have to have a community member. You have to have a parent. You have to have a staff member. You have to have an administrator. So for the majority of it, I think it was the community member that they did not unfortunately get to participate. So that's something we're going to be working on this year. And then all the HIB initiatives were not embedded throughout the curriculum. So working with Mr. Ruiz right now to make sure the health curriculum, if it doesn't have it, we're going to infuse an HIB program that we utilize in the classrooms. The second one, partially met. We had Bradley, Thurgood, and the high school. Again, it was the evidence-based programs that were specific to HIB that we did not have. And again, all the groups that were supposed to participate in the HIB programming did not. And again, the evidence of the programs being implemented throughout the school. And again, at the high school, we had two changes last year. We had the high school HIB person left. We had someone new come in. And then we had another HIB at Thurgood Marshall left. So we had new people coming in. So the change, I guess, overlapped a little bit. At the high school, we had the PBIS, which we're working on now to help out with the HIB initiatives. And plans are underway right now to implement the programs from the previous staff, like I said, resigned. So the new staff is coming in and picking up where they left off. Well, picked up where they left off. The other partially meets, again, we had Bradley, Thurgood, Asbury Park High School. Again, it was the annual implementation of the programs and initiatives. They had some of them, but not all the groups met again. So that seems to be. So that seems to be like the common goal. They have to get the community person involved in some of the programs that they're doing. And again, the evidence-based HIB programs were not, there was no evidence of it. We also had an issue with one of the requirements is that you had to have two hours of instruction on suicide training. So what happened, we did it two days during the year, but if there was a staff member that was absent, it kind of caused a problem because you didn't have everybody. So what we did this year, HR added suicide training, the two-hour suicide training to the GCN, so that everybody has to do it now. So we took care of that one there. And again, the SST did not collaboratively review the climate school and complete the HIB report, or make recommendations based on the priority findings. So they're supposed to meet twice a year. They may have done it, but they didn't have the evidence to show that they did it. So we couldn't give ourselves full points. We had to take a point off. And again, Bradley and Thurgood with HIB reporting. In order to receive a three or exceed their expectations from the DOE, both the school and the school district must have it posted on their homepage. So we had it posted on the homepage, but it wasn't necessarily posted on every school's page. And that's the reason why we had to take the point off. So 23, 24 goals and improvements. So each HIB specialist will be providing ongoing age-appropriate instruction on preventing HIBs and suicide. Each specialist will create what they actually did. They created their action plans, which were due yesterday. And they're going to take every item where they didn't meet or they partially met, and they're going to create an action plan with dates when they're going to do them. I also, again, created a checklist tracker in Google, so I can go in and see when they did what they did. If they didn't do it, I can check and see when they did it or what they didn't do. And then again, I'm going to work with the web developer to ensure that all the HIB grades are on every school site. They are now, but we can't go back. So moving forward, we won't have that issue again. And those are our HIB specialists for all four schools. Do you want to have any questions?
Seems there's a common element in some of your reporting that deals with parent participation. We have Nina Summerlin, who's with the PTO. And I think when we have resources like that, we need to be reaching out. And they can assist with parental involvements in some of these programs. The other one seems that we're looking at our website. And I think probably a month ago, I did look at some other districts' websites, which was somewhat phenomenal versus the one we have on ours. Are we looking, and this may be a question for the superintendent, are we looking at improving our website to accommodate these type of issues or other issues, performance, and integration, and interaction with the community?
Yes.
Those are the two things that I saw right offhand.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hyer. I do apologize for missing the beginning part of it. I have a teenage son taking care of my baby who just... I apologize. So what we're going to do is open up the public participation, but before we do, Adam?
Thank you. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments should be directed to the Board President. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the Board President and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the Board President and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up public participation.
Good evening. Maureen Casey, 1670 West Princeton Avenue in Brick, retired Asbury Park employee. And just wanted to say how proud I am of all the teachers and support staff that got up today and were honored, and my students. So many of those students I provided speech therapy to during my 35 years here. And it meant the world to me to see them all and to praise them and clap for them and take pictures of them. But I was sort of hoping that our coordinator, communications coordinator, would be here for such a big event for your teachers and your students. That's something that she should be at and something she should be taking pictures of. And it's definitely something that should be on the website. And up-to-date, new stuff, our stuff, our students, our teachers on the website. So I just wanted to thank you all for honoring them. Many of them were my best friends and amazing colleagues, amazing teachers, amazing supporters. And those students, every single one of them deserved to be honored tonight. So thank you. But I know that role made probably more money than I did before I retired, which is sad because I was here for 35 years. So maybe you should think about having her here for big events like this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nina Summerlin. I reside at 1101 Bangs Avenue. And this year, I've actually taken over the task of getting PTOs in all our schools. And I'd like to thank the Thurgood Marshall principal, because this week, we actually did a school store for the kids, where they can come in and purchase items for their parents, their grandparents, their uncles, their aunts. And Ms. Lauren, just so you know, as of today, we actually made $825. So I'd like to say thank you, and it was an opportunity to actually get the kids, and we actually have more parents that are getting involved. The other concern I have, Madam President, is I actually went to a special education meeting last night. And this is not my first nor my second, but this is definitely my last time repeating this. For me, going to last night's meeting was really a waste of an hour because the only thing that we went over was based on paperwork that you guys fill out or that the team fills out in regards to what's the expectations for assisting a child moving forward. For me, when you're talking about doing special education, you need to be educating our parents in regards to what their rights are, what their responsibilities are, let alone the last two meetings that I've been to for special ed, there's been no handbooks given to parents. So if you're asking parents to come out to these meetings and to get involved or stay involved, they need to actually have a handbook so they can read to understand what their responsibilities are for any IAP, for 504s, for ELL, whatever it is. But there needs to be a handbook that goes out to these parents, and that has not been done the last two meetings that I went to. So my issue is right now, and I have, I've been working with a few parents in regards to some of the issues that they have with their 504s and their IAPs. And some of the information that's being given to parents is misleading because the answer that I got last night was the total opposite of what I was told at one of the meetings. So I suggest for your director, meet with the supervisor, and figure out who's correct, who's incorrect, and fix that before you do another meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ismael Correa from Freehold, New Jersey. I am a world language teacher here in the school district. This is now my eighth year in this district. I've taught at all elementary schools in this district. I am currently teaching at the Martin Luther King Middle School. I consider myself to be a very optimistic, valuable, essential part of this district. I can look around and say that I can know a lot of people here because I've worked in many places. I've been, I've brought value to what I do in many places. I find joy in what I do. I try to grow every single day. I find that learning, I'm a lifelong learner. I thoroughly enjoy learning. But this year has been rather difficult for me. And I can say that I speak not just for me, for many of my coworkers in the building that I am. We are, we say that our goal is to create students to focus on their growth, not just in the classroom, but beyond the classroom, to be, you know, functioning members of our society. Right now, I feel, and I know many of my coworkers can't read, that our current school building is not a safe environment to be in. I feel that my job right now is being threatened because of the lack of safety that I feel in this setting. I would like to read you a quote that says, "Make a curvier of humanity. Commit yourself to the noble struggle for equal rights. You will make a better person of yourself, a greater nation, and for your country." We need to be focusing on making great members of society. And I mean this on the moral aspect of it. I understand that our job is to educate. Not only are we called to educate, we're supposed to be emotional supporters. Sometimes we act like parents. Sometimes we're the only adult that these children have in the classroom to give them encouraging words. But I have to look out for my needs first so I can meet the needs of the student. If my emotions are not being, if I'm not being fed, how can I feed others? If my cup is not outpouring, I can't outpour to students. And students that see you every single day, they know how you are. They can see your feelings. They can read into your heart. They know where you are emotionally. Two days ago, I had an incident in my classroom. And this morning, I really evaluated whether I should come to work because I just didn't feel emotionally stable. But I called, I texted our secretary in the building, and I said, disregard, I'm coming, I'm showing up. Because I knew that those students in that classroom needed me more emotionally than I needed them. But we need to all be on this mindset. We can't just serve the students' emotions. We need to be caring for our staff and their emotions and their feelings and how they are emotionally. If I don't feel safe in a setting, I can't educate. It doesn't matter how many PDs I go to, how many PDs I pay for to grow as an educator. It's not worth my time if I spend 40, 50 minutes of my class dealing with discipline issues. I'm dealing with discipline issues beyond my educational services, and this needs to be our focus, to grow students beyond the educational setting, to make up citizens of society that are functioning and can look forward to success.
Felicia Simmons. Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, President of WCC Historical Renovation Association, known for most as the West Side Community Center. I just wanted to say congratulations to all you board members. Again, I want to say thank you for the time that you serve up there. I know the work is tedious and hard, and it seems like it seems to just go on without a purpose, but you have a unique purpose. Thank you to all the teachers and support staff for all the work that you do, for the community, towards our students. And thank you to all the families who have left or who are still here. Thank you for coming because it's important. We sit, I listen to the people that came up before, and I listen to the HIB, and I listen to all the different things that come through the community. And what we severely need, and I'll say again, I had a decade of saying it, is a unanimous unity between the community and the people here. For us to reflect, for us to reflect our community and our global community. We have so much work to do, right? It's not something that started this year, last year, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. It is work that is ongoing and continuous because we have people suffering, right? We have people prospering, but we have people suffering as a whole, right? I listened to that teacher that just left, that just left here and said that they need support. We need counseling. We need counseling globally. It's something that is possible. It's something that is actually funding for. We can go out and get it and have it for our community. We need advanced technology in our schools and in our community for our students. We need curriculum that is actually for the future. We need projects. I sat back and looked at something that I put to this board in 2016 for green energy. Where would we be if we were making wind turbines in the back or installing solar panels? Where would our students and our communities be, right? Where are we with bringing our kids back and having an alternative school where it's productive, that we can sit, actually bring them home, and interject some counseling and some drug counseling and different things? Where are we with our community? Where we have to sit back and listen to the parents who call me at home, who was, I think they had an incident with their nephew that they took in, right? Their nephew that they took in, and they were accused of being drunk, but they actually suffered from a stroke, and their voice was slurred, right? How does that family member feel engaged to come back into the school? We have to seriously work on these things. We have to work with our PTO and put in policies that actually put them into the future because it's not what you sit about and we talk about in these meetings over and over again for decades. It is literally what we put on paper and we leave behind for the kids and administrators and the people that come. We have to build global societies, as is said in your mission statement. I remember when he wrote it, we sat back in the library of the high school, and we sat there and came up with this mission statement. In a library that doesn't have books and doesn't have computers and technology to bring our kids to the future. We have to sit back and offer these things, right? I'm no longer sitting back and saying, hey, it's up for you. That's why I took the position that I take. Thank you. Thank you. But again, we are family, and we need to work together. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm just getting texts that you're not live. The Teams meeting is not live. So our meeting is live, but the Teams meeting is not live. So once you get on, we'll just jump on yours like we normally do. But right now, Asbury Park reporter's live. You guys are not, so just wanted to report that out.
Good afternoon. My name is Shelley Sanders. I reside in Neptune, and I am a teacher at Martin Luther King Middle School. So lately, I've been putting in notes, and I'm not sure who reads them. It says 504 Coordinator, Classroom A, Disciplinary Principal, Superintendent, Admin Counselors, Athletic Director, Nurse, Resource Teacher, Teachers. It has a host of people who should be reading these notes. I'm not sure who reads them. If you are one of the people who read them, please, we are crying out for help. We are crying out for help. I've been here since 2001. I'm a graduate of Asbury Park High School, class of 1992. I love it here. I have no desire to go anywhere else. Please, we need help. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Peterson from Neptune. Don't hold that against me. Proud to be a teacher at the middle school here. 16-year, this is my 16th year. And also, like my person who was here before, I love teaching. I love being here in Asbury. But I am afraid. I have been physically pushed by students. I've been run into in the hallways several times. I have watched other staff members be almost pushed downstairs. It is absolutely atrocious and chaotic. And some of the same students are causing the issues, and we're wondering why that day in and day out. They are allowed to stay in the school when they are creating a completely unsafe environment for everyone. It is not just one or two people. It is everyone who is in their path. And it is unfair. I had a student today in my room, came to me, I'm afraid to go to my class. Can I stay with you to complete my work? Because there is a student who is biting me every day. I have watched students spit in other students' faces. I have been called every name in the book and told to suck every body part you could imagine. It is disgusting. It is disgraceful. I have had stuff put up online, pictures of me, videos. It's absolutely out of control. The cell phone usage in the school is... The cell phone usage in this, in the school is unreal. We need help. And I cannot educate, and the other students cannot be educated, when it's like WWE matches in the middle of the classroom. This is completely unacceptable, we need help, please do something. Our lives, our children's lives are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public participation.
What did you guys?
Hi. Were you interested in?
Yes, I wanted to read, I wanted to read my committee report.
Um, we could get adhesive PA system, please. Do we have the money? You can barely hear anything. Please, simply, adhesive PA system, thank you.
Y'all not reading your committee report? Yeah, I, I want to read mine, I want to read. Even though mine is about athletics, we had a very interesting conversation, well, meeting. Started off good, and then it sort of, but I'll let you guys know what happened. All right, so the things that we discussed, um, so fall sports wrap up. First of all, that's the good thing, um, we beat Neptune. We got a couple, um, student athletes that made, um, first teams and second teams. So when it comes to winter sports, I'll just get down to nitty gritty. So when it comes down to winter sports, the thing that held our attention the most is the, um, varsity boys' basketball, uh, middle school and high school. Is basically in jeopardy of not performing due to low turnout. And a low turnout is due to eligibility, um, whether it's physicals or academics. And it starts from the middle school all the way to the high school. And it's very concerning, it's like an alarm at the gate. So basically, we discussed this for like, almost an hour. If the students are already not performing in the middle school, by the time they get to the high school, it's going to be even worse. And then we're going to have some young adults out here that's not worried about academics, and they're going to cause just disruption, whether it's in school or out of school. And it's like a cry for help, we need to do something, we need to, I don't know, for extra tutoring, eve- even if they're not even studying to be eligible to play a sport, they still need to be eligible to do something in life. And that's what I wanted to speak about. And it also ties into the concerns that some of the teachers that came up here and said, like, I hear so much, and like, how they're crying for help, the students are too. And I know other people out here are crying for help. Whether you live here, even if you don't have a child in the district, you still live here and you see them, and it's like, it's getting bad. So if it's starting from now, imagine five years later, what type of students, what type of young adults these children will be. And it's gonna ruin a lot of families and people that live here, and people that really care about this district and city. So we gotta do something. We, we hear the cries, we really gotta do something, we really gotta come together. It gotta take all of us, it's going, it's going to take all of us. And I'm telling you, five years, I've been saying it for months now, years, like, I'm telling you, give it five years, this will not be here, this will not be here, if we keep going in this direction. So whatever has to happen, we, however we can meet up and really discuss and really make a plan and execute, execute. We talk all this, we need to execute. And that's it, that was athletics. That was athletics. And to the teachers that came up here, I hear you and I feel you. And we gonna make it right. Before my term is up, we gonna make it right.
Yeah, right now, um, policy, I know we didn't discuss it, I wasn't even on the policy, but, well, I know we're going over student conduct, and it was an issue. Uh, a student conduct, and from the policy, I wasn't on a policy meeting, and I brought it up in the last meeting, that I wanted to review it. And it discussed, um, if a child cuts class twice, they will not have a full credit for that class, or, uh, they won't get credit for that class. That one particular incident, it just, you know, it brought me back to examining, are we being a little bit, you know, over, over, you know, uh, penalizing in that, in that situation? And what can we do to go to another? Maybe if that person cuts the second time, they do, you know, some type of Saturday, Saturday class? And then the third time, they look to get their class totally, um, taken out. You know, there's, there's many reasons that we, you know, we're, we're setting a new conduct code, and also we're doing it in the middle of the year. What if one kid had already had it, and then cuts a class now? Is he grandfathered in in this policy? Are we going to be losing? And maybe the attorney can tell us something about, uh, procedural policy. You know, somebody cuts a class, we, we had a, a policy that was three, and then we changed it to two in the middle of the year. What happens?
So as part of, um, an overall policy idea or statement, there typically is flexibility built in. And so the idea, you know, we're shifting more from a penalty disciplinary, um, regime, if you will, to more restorative practices and things like that, to try and correct and improve, um, outcomes. And so to the extent the board is going to change a policy or code of conduct in the middle of the year, um, there's nothing that would, to my knowledge, um, prohibit the board from doing so. But I would certainly encourage the administration and staff, if there is a policy change that could unduly affect a student mid, mid-year because of the policy change, I would, um, suggest that discretion be exercised, uh, with the idea that, you know, it's really the goal is restorative practices as opposed to discipline. And so it's, you know, it, again, this is not a legal issue, uh, this is more of an educational or pedagogical issue. Um, but it would be my hope that out of just fundamental fairness, that a student, i- i- a little discretion may be exercised to the extent a student would be penalized just because there's been a change in the, in the, in the code of conduct during the, during the year.
May I ask a question, uh, Mr. Rogers? Where did you see that, under which heading? That they got kicked out of class? Because all I see cutting or leaving assigned location is parent contact, contact, and teacher conference, then it goes on to detention, parent contact, counselor conference, uh, after one week, one day, then it is progressive, third, fourth, fifth action. There is nothing that mentions there being thrown out of class. So I just wanted to ask you where you saw that? Because this is the regulation that, that you're talking about.
Yeah, right now, this was in the revised, I didn't, I left my iPad in my car.
That's what I'm looking at right now, so I was wondering where you saw that.
Well, right now, I saw it in, in the, in, in, uh, I think it was cuts. It's just, yeah.
I see in cutting class, and it doesn't say that in cutting class. Under, uh... What we're speaking about is the regulation, uh, under the policy for student discipline. And Mr. Rogers says he saw something where if a student was cutting class, after a second infraction, they were removed from the class, at least that's what I understand. And I'm looking at part of this, and I see under, um, the regulation about cutting class or leaving assigned locations, and nowhere does it say, even after the fifth and subsequent actions, a student would be thrown out of class. So I wanted to know where he saw that.
Right, like I said, I, I don't have my iPad with me. Uh, it was something I, I glanced when I was going through, and that was an issue that I, that I come across. And if I'm, uh, mistaken, I'll go back and look at it, and we follow back up with it.
Wait, so since we're on the topic of like student conduct, so if a student is destructive in class, what will happen? Like, what, what's, what's the change that is being presented?
That's not a change, it's a whole regulation that we were given, uh, two months ago to read. Um, but he was mentioning a specific that he saw, and I, I looked it up. I just went through real class, uh, fast and found it, and I didn't, it's not where I found, it doesn't say that. So I wanted to know where he might have seen it, but he doesn't know it at this point.
Yeah, let, let me go back and look at it. I was glimpsing through it and rushing today.
So what would be the outcome, from what's going on now to after this is passed, what would like be the?
I couldn't tell you if that specific one was changed. I can't tell you if that was changed, I'd have to compare it. That might be the same, I don't know.
I, I might be able to look it up when we go into exact, uh, so we follow back up with it. Uh, and I could probably pull up from my phone. But he just also brought up, uh, and I hate to bring this up, uh, since we are, and I just heard, uh, something disturbing about that. How do, how do I address this? If some of the things that we heard today were being done, uh, by a child or issues that need to be addressed, how do we know these things are addressed?
So what I'll say is some of those things are falling into personnel, and, um, we will be discussing those and other issues related, um, in executive session. Um, but given the fact that the public comments regarding, um, those staff members' concerns, um, are not taken lightly, I can say the music teacher from that location was one of my teachers. I can say that, um, each and every one of those concerns, um, we hea- I hear you. I hear you. I hear you.
Um, since you was doing committee reports, I did want to give an update. Um, one of the things that we did, were we able to do, there was some action taken earlier in the year in regards to security. We've gotten security guards trained, but one of the things we were able to do, um, this, um, Monday and Tuesday, we had, um, Mr. Bet Gambino from the, Dr. Gambino from the Division of Emergency and State Safety and School Security from the, um, the Department of Education, come and walk on all the school buildings. Um, the purpose of him coming was to assess the, um, the status of our school buildings in regards to, um, safety and security. Um, he, um, during each walkthrough, the principals all had to attend along with, um, the staff, um, in, in regards to buildings and grounds. And we took copious notes based on all of his, um, onsite recommendations. He is coming back to the schools, um, buildings to provide in-depth training to administrators, to security officers, and to any support staff. One of the things I wanted to also note was that many of the things that we saw, we have begun to remedy as quick as possible. It's going to take us a few months to remedy a number of the, of the situations that we saw. But we are on top of it in order to make sure that at least on a building level, that we have all of our schools, um, at the level that the state of New Jersey has recommended as best practices. Thank you.
Uh, she, uh, Dr., um, Dr. Adam, that report from, uh, can we get a copy of that?
It's in the, it's in the finance and, uh, no, Buildings and Grounds, uh, minutes you received in your email.
Okay, from that walkthrough with the, uh, okay, yeah, okay.
Um, the actual walkthrough, we don't have a physical report, i- as of yet. We took notes, and when we do get something that could be handed out, we'll give that. But I will say this, security reports, because they deal with security, will not be a public document. So the, the recommendations and the things that we implement, because it is about security, will be confidential. But the summary, once he gives that to us, we will be sharing it with the board and, and, and keeping you updated on the different measures we have implemented in order to, um, make sure we are following best practices.
In, in the timeline of this being done, um, the priorities I see that we kind of heard today, what, what are we doing on these extreme situations to make sure that people are feeling comfortable?
Again, that goes into areas of personnel. I got a question. When, when did you say this walkthrough happened?
Um, it was Monday, all day Monday, and all day, this, this Monday and all day Tuesday. And all, all four schools were walkthrough. And he is, we're scheduling him to come back on a few more days. So it's not completed, it just started.
I got, I got a question, I want to say something, but like, it's like, everything is so, you know, like, too much politics into it. We gotta be real right now, like, it's been so much going on since the beginning of the school year. And it's January now, basically. It's like, something gotta give. Like, every, every time we come to a meeting, every month, we're losing, we're losing teachers, like, so much, I just, it's more now. Like, it's getting scary. I don't know if y'all see it, and I'm trying to tell y'all, I, I see the whole field, it's, it's, it's getting bad out here.
And it's time to take a motion to accept the minutes.
All second.
I didn't hear, um, Ms. Ritz, you. Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remmy? Ms. Ritz? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
President Cook? Motion passed.
Axwell Consent Agenda on All Items, B1, Number One through B4, including the walk-on item that was passed out as a separate attachment, um, for the board's consideration.
May I ask a question though, before we go? Uh, are we going to go in sec first? Are we going to go in exec first? There's some personnel items on there, or no?
No. No, there's no personnel items.
I'll move it.
I like to talk about 7A. Yeah. The question, the revision of the job description listed below, can you explain that?
What's your specific question? We added the authorized individuals to update the job description, which was last updated in 2021.
What were the changes?
We added principal to the job description as authorized supervisor that reports to.
I thought these were, isn't this, isn't this a district? Is this coordinator goes into all the school districts?
This individual provides services, yes, to all schools.
And was it under, previously under what department?
Student Services. But in many other districts, that is not the case. And we are aligning our job description, which is normally the practice in a lot of other districts as well.
Well, I've seen quite a few documents that I've come across and I've read, and I wanted to focus and go back on that Student Services, and these are addressing issues that we're hearing from the public.
No, this is not.
No, no, other issues that we're hearing from the public and other documents that I've read, where Student Services, which is our formal area of, which she did the report on the HIB and other issues. Why is a student assessment being taken away from that department and given to a principal when this is going to be District 1?
This is not a SAC position, and the authority of assigning the SAC as the Chief School Administrator is my operational prerogative. Therefore, to align the responsibilities of the SAC and the responsibilities of the evaluation is why the job description also needed to be updated, which was why the job description update is on this evening.
Well, you're right, and I'm not questioning whether it is your authority. I'm questioning, as you said in the alignment, if you have one principal that's overseeing something that interferes with other principals in their action or works, wouldn't a director be more accessible to how the actions of that person dealing with the whole school district and being fair? So one of the things I, one of the things I'm seeing is that we're not aligning equally and makes all the districts and all the schools are functioning the same.
So the responsibility and the confidentiality of the substance abuse coordinator in this case is to ensure that they're providing services to students that have those particular needs. The authority to evaluate that individual does not pose any conflict because that individual's also housed in a secondary setting. Therefore, not only does the director conduct an evaluation of that individual, so does the high school principal in which they are housed.
What if it's, say, middle school?
They provide services to those students as they would where those services are needed. So that's the reason why we put principal on there as well.
So it'd be the principal for that school providing the service, not the high school principal providing the service to the middle school? So what would be?
When you mean service, the substance abuse coordinator, the SAC, provides services to students that have issues related to substance abuse or other counseling measures related to that particular area, related with the confidentiality. However, the high school principal or a principal would also be allowed to do evaluations on that individual, given the services that they may be providing to students in terms of oversight.
That's exactly what I just asked. You just said a high school principal and a director are going to give evaluation.
Yes, they both can evaluate.
And any conflict or any direction of evaluations comes into conflict, you have two people evaluating. If I have two people evaluating somebody, and someone says, I want you to go left, and the other person says, I want you to go right, are we going to have a conflict? No, you can't have multiple people. I just heard that. I know when I'm in corporate, if I have going one way, that person reported to me.
That makes sense. Yeah, like it shouldn't be entertaining.
Can I speak to evaluations itself? Evaluations are dictated by Chief New Jersey. And so if you look at the evaluation system itself, we all as administrators evaluate all staff that are under us. So you have a person, a non-tenure teacher gets evaluated at least three times. There could be three different evaluators that evaluate that person because you want to have different people with eyes on that person and giving feedback from the perspective. We work together to do co-evaluations or co-observations. And the limit on that is that each supervisor has to do at least two co-evaluations every single year. Okay? So you could have any teacher who is evaluated by multiple people in a single school year.
Yeah, the word there is facilitating co. This says it changed the direction from.
That's just an aspect. That's just an aspect. Not everyone gets a co-evaluation. Some people get single evaluations. Most people get single evaluations.
Exactly. One person that gets single evaluation, not two people giving one directive evaluation.
I think you're misunderstanding when I say evaluations and observations. So when, let's just take me for an example, right? As a building principal, I've been a building principal. As the director, I'm certified as an administrator, school administrator, school leader, right? I can go and evaluate, if you're a teacher in a building, MLK, if you're a teacher in another building, I can go evaluate you under that certificate. I might evaluate the two of you sitting at that table. Then she might come behind me and do a second evaluation on the two of you. That's different and separate and apart from the evaluation that I have completed. That's how evaluations work.
Yeah, I totally, I can agree. But then you have a cumulative score, and evaluation is independently and separately identified. Right now, we're talking about their responsibility being switched from one area to another. And then you have other principals now who could just as well evaluate that person. So you have each building person facilitating on one person on what their job functions are. If I'm reading this correctly, maybe we just need to.
Let me re, let me provide some clarity. Adding another administrator on a job description in terms of who they can directly report to.
Can I make a motion? Can we table it? Can we table B2, number 7A?
So my, Mr. Remy, my recollection is that there's been a motion and a second on the consent agenda, or no?
No, we didn't get that.
Yes, on the consent agenda. So you'd have to.
You'd have to withdraw the motion.
You'd have to withdraw your motion.
And then make a new motion.
And make a new motion.
To approve the consent agenda without, with the removal of item 7A, if you wanted to do it that way.
If we, but we didn't, we didn't, the motion's up, so we have to withdraw the motion.
There's currently, my understanding is there's currently a motion on the floor for the consent agenda. So that would, excuse me, whoever made that motion can withdraw that motion. And then a new motion could be made to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7A. And then you'd make a motion to table 7A if you'd like to do that as well.
I'd like, I'd like to say something before we move forward. I don't know if Ms. Ritz is going to withdraw her motion. I think there's some misunderstanding about how evaluations work. I think there's some confusion here. You can have several different people that could evaluate you at different, you can have several different levels of evaluations, whether it's a supervisor, a principal, an administrator. There's several people that can evaluate you. And Mr. Penna, Dr. Penna knows because he's been, he's in the teaching field. I did teach at one time. I think there's confusion. All there was added was a person that can evaluate the SAC, which is in line with the administrative organizational chart. So I'm not quite sure what, I think there's some confusion as to what this did.
There's no, if you.
I agree with what you're saying, Barbara. There is confusion. And I think that, I agree with Mr. Remy, because there is the confusion, that it might be best to withdraw it and then table it, just so that we can have everybody on the same page. I just think that that's safer rather than moving forward. That's just my opinion.
I'll second that.
It's either that or you just vote no, and it comes up again in another, another meeting. It's up to you, Mr. X, what you want to do. Then we'll just have a roll call, I guess.
This is to approve Section E1, 1 through 16, and also the walk-on that was handed out. Ms. Laskinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes, on everything but B2, number 7A. That's no, for me.
Mr. Remy?
No.
Ms. Ritz?
Yes, on everything, recusing myself for anything that have to do with awards.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
You know what? I'm just voting down. Everything down.
Ms. Cook?
Why, it's not business.
No. Based on the votes, we have 4, 4, 4.3 on 7A. I'll count one more time. Laskinski? Penna? Remy? Ricks? Oh, Rogers? 1, 2, 3. So right now, we have, I'm sorry, I said 4.3 is 3. 3 on 7A. However,
I'm going to use my authority as a state mod to approve the entire agenda as presented, including the item for the SAC coordinator, item 7A.
Excuse me, can you explain why? I think we, when you make decisions like that, we need to be reported on.
Yeah, the SAC coordinator makes perfect sense to me. It's just a minor change in the job description as to who's doing the evaluations. I don't have a problem with that. As far as the rest of the agenda, we don't have enough votes to approve the transfers. You need six votes for transfers. We had, what, only at most four? And as far as the bill's list, you need at least five. So I'm approving the entire agenda.
Can you also have that reported in a document to us?
Excuse me, we didn't get the DA's agenda yet, right? Correct? Not yet.
At this time, I'll move items C1 through 12, and also addendum items 1 and 2. Can I get a motion?
I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to, if I may, make the motion not including C4, 10B, because the Board hasn't discussed, I guess it would be a conflict attorney or another attorney. I'd like to, a little more information on that. That's my motion. C4, 10B, I just don't know anything about the firm. I didn't hear anything about it, so I wanted to.
I'll move it.
Unless we discuss it.
I said I'll move it.
I thought we were going to an exec to find out what they were about.
Maybe we can discuss it in exec if we can. That's why I would like to approve it.
What's the motion for?
The motion was to approve the entire business agenda except for C4, 10B with a firm. I wanted to find a little more information out about, about what it is, and that's all.
Excuse me, Dr. Simmons, I have a question. Well, I guess after this, then. But I have a question. All right, did you put any RFPs for professional services?
Specifically for? There's a couple of RFPs looking to be approved on this agenda. Is that what you're referring to?
For next year.
Specifically for?
So I want to do one for special counsel or?
We're in the middle, Anthony, we're in the middle of a motion. Yeah, but you can only ask questions on the, you can ask after we're done voting, that's all. Yeah, but you can only ask questions on the, um, you can ask after we're done voting, that's all. Mr. Remy, if I, if I may, you might want to do that during the reword with the new board.
Ms. Lazinski, um, my recommendation is that we go into executive so we can make it very clear what the motions are for. So if you would, um, if you could withdraw your motion, then we could do a different motion to go into exec so that we could clarify.
I'll with.
The items.
I'll withdraw my motion. I'd like to make a motion to go with me, Zach.
Thank you. Second? Anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Ted.
All in favor to go into executive session?
Aye.
Any objections? Thank you. At this time, we're going to executive session in order to, um, discuss items of legal and personnel matters. Thank you.
And also, if I'm not mistaken, uh, personnel's covered. Um, ladies and gentlemen, it's anticipated that executive session will be about an hour. Um, there will be no formal action taken in executive session. Any formal action, to the extent that there is formal action, will be taken out here in public uh, at the conclusion of executive session. So it'll be an executive session for about an hour at this point. And we will be returning to this room after that. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to come back in public, please?
Move it.
Sorry. Thank you. All of you. Thanks. I want to do a roll call. Dr. Simmons has to do it.
This roll call is to, for us to come back into regular, um, session. Ms. La, Ms. Lazinski? Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy? Ms. Rix? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
President Cook? Take a motion for, um, us to, to put on the table C1, 1 to 12, um, um, without, um, 10B, I believe that's the number, and then the addendum 1 and 2. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you. That's Ms., President Cook and Dr. Penna?
Ms. Rix and, uh, Dr. Penna.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I didn't, I didn't look up. I didn't look up. Any questions? Ms. Lazinski?
Uh, yes on everything. I'm just gonna abstain, uh, the reimbursement from the conference.
Thank you. Dr. Penna?
Yes on everything.
Mr. Remy?
Yes on everything.
Ms. Rix?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Uh, I'm staying on, which one we just talked, oh, 10, no. No, the, the, uh, thing that we just discussed. Oh, uh, everything, yes. I'm, I'm tired.
No problem. And President Cook? Okay, thank you. Motion's passed. Are we gonna have a motion on?
Yes, a motion to deny the grievance presented in executive session tonight by the APEA.
Move it.
Any questions? Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Rix?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Upstate.
And President Cook? Motion passed.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting and thank, uh, I'm not gonna do it now. I, I restore my motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn the, the meeting and thank, uh, you wanna do it or no?
Let her end what it been.
Can you be quiet for a second? Damn. Can I please make a motion to end our meeting?
Move it.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Can I get?
Second.
Can I comment? No!
There's a motion on the floor, Barbara.
Yes, it's a.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.